All right. We will start our meeting. I call this meeting of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente to order on Wednesday, November 8th, 2023 at 5:00 PM in the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers. Tonight, Commissioner McCann will lead us in the pledge. If you could all please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay. As far as attendance, all Planning Commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Crandall. We may see him later, I don't know, but he's abstinent this time. Item number four on our agenda is Special Order of Business Presentations. We have none, which takes us to item five, minutes. Does anyone have any comments, questions about the minutes? Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Vice Chair McCacken, and I will give the second to Commissioner Prescott Lefler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Item six is public comment, and that section is reserved for any member of the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on an item that's not already on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we'll get to it. But if somebody's here and wants to speak on a non-agenda item, now's the time. Do we have anybody? No. Okay. Next item is the consent calendar. We have none. Item eight is public hearings. We don't have any of those tonight, but we do have item nine, which is new business. And the first item is item A, the 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Calendar. I'll turn to our city planner, Jonathan Lightfoot, for this item.
Thank you, Chair Cosgrove. So the council met at their regular meeting yesterday evening and had this item in front of them as well to set their agenda for next year. And so the purpose of this is for planning purposes and so that you all can better plan out next year and the calendar there. So the meetings that were canceled, you can see them a little bit small, my apologies, on this screen here, but April 2nd, which aligns with spring break for the local schools, July 2nd, which is traditionally canceled near July 4th, and August 6th for summer break, and then November 5th, which is election day, and then finally January 7th of 2025. So, long ways out from that one still, but that's the New Year's meeting. So those are the council meetings that the council has decided to cancel. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission follow that and cancel your meetings that immediately follow those dates. But if you would like to differ from that, you're certainly welcome to, and I would return it to the chair for discussion.
Do you need a motion or just a consensus?
I think it'd be good to take that by motion, just so that...
Okay. Do we have any discussion about the calendar that somebody, say, disagrees with the recommendation from staff?
I'm just wondering about the meeting that would be near Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm.
When would that fall, Jonathan?
Are you talking this year?
No, in 2024.
Okay.
We've already canceled it for this year.
I'm going to pull up the calendar.
You looking for another?
So this year, we canceled the second meeting of November, which is the week of Thanksgiving. So we have one meeting, obviously today is our November meeting. Next year, the meeting would not fall on the week of Thanksgiving. That meeting would be the 20th, and Thanksgiving will be the 28th next year, so it's about a week, just over a week before. And then we would still have one meeting in November.
I move that we approve the 2024 calendar with the cancellations as recommended by staff.
We have a motion from Commissioner McCann to adopt the Planning Commission calendar. It's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passes unanimously. Now, item 9B, the Camino Capistrano crosswalk and red curbing on Camino Capistrano and Villa Breva and Montevista. Before I ask the staff, I do want to recognize Commissioner Prescott Lefler on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live very near, in fact, right around the corner from this location, so under the rules and regulations, I must recuse myself. So when discussion begins, I will take an exit.
Okay. I think she's welcome to sit in the audience, is she not?
She is supposed to leave the room entirely.
Okay. Would now be the time for that, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I will leave.
But please come back. We'll send somebody for you. Don't go far. Okay. Before I turn to staff, I do want to let members of the public know that if you are here and you'd like to speak with us on this, that would be great. All I ask is that you fill out a blue speaker card, you get those in the back, and then hand those to our recording clerk, Tamara here, and then I can call you if you want to speak. You're not required to, but you're certainly invited, and we encourage it. With that, Zach Ponson, would you like to lead off the staff report?
Thank you very much, Chair Cosgrove. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Zach Ponson. I'm your Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Traffic Engineer. Tonight, in front of you, we have two proposals that we've combined into one agenda. One is for adding some red curbing to public streets, and then another is to add a crosswalk at the intersection of Camino Capistrano and Villa Breva. So with that, I'll be pretty short on tonight's agenda, but I'm going to... Tonight's role for you is to provide a recommendation that I'll be taking to City Council. That is tentatively scheduled for December 5th, so public noticing, it has gone out for this meeting and for the upcoming council meeting. So, like I said in the agenda report, we've... Staff has received a lot of questions and concerns regarding traffic safety in this area. And so a lot of it comes from the Bay Cliff Village Homeowners Association, which is on the south side of Camino Capistrano, between Villa Breva and all the way around that curb there. So, as you can see on the exhibit, the center of that exhibit is kind of that HOA area. So for years, staff has got communications about speeding, requests for traffic signals, stop signs, and most recently, crosswalks and red curbs. So this most recent analysis for traffic calming, staff, as I mentioned in our staff report, we did look at a stop sign warrant, which would... This intersection would not qualify for. Under California's MUTCD, you don't like to add stop signs as traffic calming. They're a traffic control device, not a calming device. So unless the cross traffic from the side streets is very similar to the main street, you really should not be adding stop signs. So staff would not be recommending any stop signs at any of these intersections. What we did further analysis on this, we did look at the red curbing request, and I'll start with that one. The Bay Cliff Village HOA has several pedestrian walkways from their units that go out to the street on all three of their sides. And it's very difficult for the seniors in this community to get to the street because they do not have public sidewalk along any of these frontages. Sorry. So staff is recommending adding five-foot sections of red curbing at each one of their walkways. So far, it doesn't look like it's going to affect parking and parking counts at any of the public streets. In this proposal, you will see a little small section of green at the intersection of Caie, Camino Capistrano, and Villa Breva. That was eight feet of green curb that is shown to actually be removing red curb. We're doing that in hopes of actually keeping a stall and not losing one. We have heard some complaints from the residents about that proposal to remove red curb at that intersection, mostly because of line of sight. Staff does feel it does still have adequate engineering line of sight, because you don't measure that from the stop bar, you measure it further out as a vehicle you stop at the stop bar, and then you inch out into intersections. So from a stopping site distance and MUTCD rules, we do believe we can justify removing that red curb, but we're not opposed to it if Planning Commissioner Council want to keep that as red, if they feel that their, you know, the extra line of sight is just needed. So we're not opposed to that, but our proposal is including removing eight feet of red curb there, just so we can keep a stall. On this exhibit, you'll see, I think it was 42 feet of red curb on the north side of Camino Capistrano. That's being proposed only if the crosswalk is being added, and that's to help line of sight from southbound vehicles to be able to see the crosswalk a little bit better well in advance. So if for some reason the crosswalk doesn't get approved by City Council, the red curbing on that north side will actually not be part of our proposal. So, then I'll move on into the crosswalk. So part of that traffic calming analysis by staff did include, like I said, a stop sign warrant to see if that was justified, which it was not. We then looked at the public's concerns about crossing. And as a standalone intersection, this would not meet the required number of pedestrians to justify a crosswalk, but this area is serving the blue line trolley directly at this intersection. So looking at the traffic counts from this last summer, we got about 40 trolley riders a week on average going southbound and 15 going northbound a week. And so that's for people entering the trolley. So at the end of the day, when they're coming home, you've got similar amount of traffic crossing, you know, twice a day. So based on the fact that there's a trolley stop here, staff is recommending the crosswalk on the condition that it also includes the advance warning flashing lights and that the crosswalk be a flashing lights within the crosswalk itself. The advance warning beacons will be set up well in advance of the crosswalk, and they are scheduled to be set at 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Those will give drivers advance notice of the crosswalk before entering this curved area. So ideally, if this was straight, we might not need as much warning on it, but due to the curve, we're asking for that flashing advance warning signs. The crosswalk itself, like I said, will have activated, a lit crosswalk on the ground and an above-ground flashing sign that'll activate only when the button is pushed. And so that'll help people get to and from these trolley stops. With that, I am available for questions? The next slide, I apologize, is in your packet, shows those advance warning signs, the stop locations for the trolley and that crosswalk there. One thing we'll also probably do, we noticed that one of the trolley stops on the south side doesn't have concrete sidewalk to it, we'll probably be adding sidewalk there. I will point out, too, that staff recently applied for a grant to the state to try to get sidewalk on the south side of Camino Capistrano from just out of this picture, the city boundary is the major intersection to the upper left at... I'm blanking on that street, but the next intersection to the north... I'm blanking on that intersection. But just off this picture is our city line, but at that grant application, we'd be looking at adding sidewalk from here all the way down to Vicero. And so if that actually happens on that grant, you'll probably see us in a year or two after construction, because we would not be putting back the red curb on Camino Capistrano on the south side. Because once that sidewalk goes in, ideally then the seniors have plenty of other areas to get to their vehicles and get to the street. And so right now, it's mostly because they don't have a sidewalk, and they don't have any way to truly get off their private walkways. And with the number of cars that park there, we feel adding the five feet shouldn't remove a lot of parking stalls, if any, except for that area in green, like I said. So in conclusion, we're here for questions and comments, if you have any, and we'll open it up to you guys.
Okay, great. Let's go through our Commissioners. You want to start us off?
So was a crosswalk specifically requested?
Yes. So in addition to signals, stop signs, crosswalks, I mean, that was one of the... We've got a lot of requests for different things in that area, but crosswalk was specifically requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah. Vice Chair McCann.
The eight-foot area where you're going to remove the red curb, that's for parking space? I mean, eight feet doesn't...
So it's small on the exhibit here, so if you look, there's a small red dot to the right of the green. That five feet of red curb only leaves 12 feet of parking area between existing red area.
Okay, so we have 20 feet there.
So we're trying to create a 20-foot strip there. Yes. Otherwise, it would be a 12-foot strip that really only a golf cart can park in, or some sort of tiny little electric car. Thank you.
Chair Protam, do you have questions? No? Commissioner Davis.
Okay. So I'm looking at those five-foot boxes that you have in there, and you say they're in there. Can you explain kind of what they're intended to do and why? I don't quite get those yet.
So, and it's kind of hard to see on the exhibit, but in the senior Bay Cliff HOA that's there, you'll see adjacent to each one of those red dots that represents the five feet, there's a private walkway that goes up into their community. And so those are private walkways, they're not public sidewalks in any way. But each one of those kind of just terminates into the public street. So what we're doing is trying to give the seniors an area to exit those private walkways to get to their cars. If there was public sidewalk there, we would not be doing this at all.
Is there a way we could bring it up on like satellite? Because it kind of looks like, doesn't look like those are sidewalks?
They are four-foot wide walkways from their units and from to the street, so...
But what about the ones going parallel to Montevista, right? That follow Montevista, I'm pulling it up on a satellite as I could see it.
Montevista has like a two-foot sidewalk area and it's not a compliant sidewalk by any means. So on the, especially on the east side of Montevista, there's a two-foot little strip of concrete there. I think that's what you might be referring to. And then they have several that connect onsite of their site. You're right, there are other private sidewalks on their site. It's not just these ones that come out. There's ones that parallel.
You could create a five-foot annoying that like, so if you have four feet on one side of this five-foot mark and you have four feet on the other side of this five-foot mark, so that's eight feet plus you have the five-foot mark, right? So now we're giving up 13 feet of usable space. Does that make sense well? What I'm saying there?
Well, the red curbs that are proposed are pretty far apart from each other, so I guess maybe I'm not understanding that.
Well, so if you have a car that parks four feet prior to the red.
Oh, I got you.
And then you got the five feet, and then you got the four feet. Now we created a 13 or whatever, 13-foot gap. And from what I'm seeing, as far as when I'm bringing up a satellite in a tiny little... Can we bring up satellite on this thing or what?
Yeah, we can. So could you exit?
Because is, while we're doing that, is a two-foot walkway not adequate to... You'd rather have them go between the cars and walk on the street to their car than walk down that two-foot? Is that what that's like, the intention of that is?
And that's their request. And so right now, that two-foot is not a compliant sidewalk in any way. That HOA likely built that, or the original developer for that HOA likely built that. And the city has looked at, can we add sidewalk in that area? It would be pretty expensive and pretty, pretty... It would remove several large trees of theirs. And on the Montevista side, require retaining wall, probably three to four feet high. Looking into several hundreds of thousands of dollars to add sidewalk.
Chair Davis, real quick, are you... No, I just wanted to talk to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you referring to just the five-foot squares on Montevista or also on Camino Capistrano?
Let's talk about them all.
Okay.
I can't really decipher from what I'm seeing on this map. It's too small for me to get my head around it for real. And then from what I'm pulling up on a satellite dish, what I've looked at, I can't really quite get there. But if the intention is to get them to walk through this five-foot space, go through between two cars and then go to their cars, they walk down 40, 50, 60, 70 feet against the road on the street side of their cars, I don't know if I quite concur with that. And I understand it was their request, but that doesn't... I'm just assessing that thing together.
We have the street view on the display now, if you wanted to make your point.
Can I ask a quick question before we talk about that?
Sure.
It looks like, to Commissioner Davis's point, it looks like a long Camino cap. I mean, from this picture, it kind of looks like there's a sidewalk. Obviously, there's not. Do you think maybe that's like a wide gutter plate or something?
There, it could be that the gutter itself is two feet instead of 18 inches and showing up in the satellite a little bit wider. There definitely is not sidewalk there. So because part of our grant application is to put sidewalk there. Straighten out the street. There's a weird bend in the street halfway through their frontage. Part of our grant application is to kind of fix all that. And hopefully, we could get that grant.
Landscaping. I walked this, I walked this neighborhood and I sat there for a while and watched traffic. And the exhibit that we have is a little misleading in that it looks like there's a sidewalk on the south side of Camino Capistrano, but it is not. It is all landscaped curb gutter. So just now, back to you, Commissioner Davis, to continue your point.
Yes, I understand what the point there is. Now, what about on Montevista? Is that a wide enough, is that two-foot flat walkway?
That's the two feet that we were talking about. If, Tamara, if you drop your little guy into the street view on there. Or...
On the other side.
There you go. Drop the little yellow. Grab him and drop him on the blue line, there you go. So that, that is, that is the two-foot strip on the east side of Montevista. If she pans around to the right, I do believe there's two feet on, excuse me, I'm sorry, the left. I believe there's two feet on the other side too. It does look like there's two feet on the other side. And so Montevista does have a two-foot strip there. Like I said, that's not an ADA compliant sidewalk by any means, but I understand your point.
Yeah, my point is I would not like to encourage people to wa... Look how narrow, let's look down that street, please. And like, you're gonna have, if there's two cars on both sides, people walking down that thing?
So that street is 40 feet wide, curb to curb.
Okay.
And so with parking on both sides, it does give you... If they're parked, depending on how close they park to the curb, but you have some pretty wide travel lines there.
Okay, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So let me just resume the point that Commissioner Davis is making, but on Camino Capistrano. And his concern is somebody stepping out between two cars onto the street. Am I correct? I'm gonna have to look at my picture. I don't know that I, I didn't see it when I was there. But again, I don't know if this is, exhibit is correct. This would indicate that there's almost like a lane marker between the parked cars and the vehicular roadway. And I, when I walked it, I don't recall seeing that. Do you know what I'm saying there? Almost like a bike lane, but it's not.
No, they're on Camino Capistrano?
Yes. That little white line that's right next, adjacent, on the south side, next to the vehicles.
That should, that should be there on street view. I think if she were to drop it in, it's not there because it's cat-tracked and ready to be striped, happens to be in the photo. The street, the aerial view should have that stripe in there, is my recollection.
Because I think the point that he's trying to make is...
That's the street edge line is what we're outside the parking stalls.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
I believe that edge line is still there.
It's still there.
On street view, it's not because it was being paved during the... Happened to be photographed during the...
Okay, actually, now I'm looking at one of the pictures I took and I do see it there. So in your opinion, does that street edge line provide the margin of safety for individuals to walk out onto the street between two parked cars in order to go left or right to their parked car?
I mean, obviously, safety is a judgmental thing if they're paying attention. I'm always gonna cover, cover that a little bit.
I understand.
At Camino Capistrano, the edge line is out pretty far because of that bump in the right of, the curb line.
Yes.
So there's quite a bit of extra room out there between their car and that edge line for approximately 60, 70% of Camino Capistrano's frontage.
Yeah.
For sure has extra room.
I could see your point on Montevista, but maybe on Camino Capistrano, I think, I think there's some value there as if the residents are saying they need it.
So my thought is, they could probably find somewhere to walk between cars.
They could. It's just that the landscaping is such that it, there could be some challenges going through the bushes.
I have a concern also about liability of the city to encourage putting in those red blocks to actually as a pedestrian walkway to encourage that. Is there liability there?
I'll defer to our city attorney for that answer.
I would have to look into that some more. I wouldn't be able to tell you that off the top of my head, just looking at this today.
Okay, so I just want to continue on with, you know, with that observation. The crosswalk, I think, I actually practiced crossing that street there quite a bit. And I was a little nervous, honestly. I was like, oh, you know. Because of the curve and the line of sight, I think it is, I think there is a concern there for people that are crossing the street. They've got to pretty much hustle, I think. That, you know, it's like, ah. So I think it, I think that there's value in putting that in. However, you know, it's just painted lines on the street and the drivers have to obviously be aware that pedestrians are crossing. And I think you're putting in the right number of warning signs and everything else. My, so my question is, do you, is there any other... Is there any other warning or notification on the street to drivers of this sidewalk that you thought about but didn't do? That we should, that we could consider adding back in?
We've added quite, quite a bit more than you typically see. And something I didn't mention, there's also a ped ahead striping added to the street on the asphalt too.
Okay.
So the, it shows up as a little dark symbols on each side before it. So drivers see that, a flashing sign. And then once you get closer to the crosswalk, that button should be flashing the ground and an additional light at it. So that, I mean, I don't know of anything else we physically can do.
Did you do a speed study on this?
Yeah, so I put the results in the agenda report. We did do a speed study at that section. The 85th percentile came out at 33 miles per hour. The street's marked at 30. So it did not qualify for traffic calming and other measures.
Did you contemplate a radar speed sign?
That was one of the things we were looking at before kind of the crosswalk. And so we were looking at, is there other things that can do? But technically, that's a form of traffic calming if we wanted to look that way. It can be part of your recommendation, you know, with that recommendation of council?
I tell you why I bring it up, is because sitting out there myself, the curve, and the fact that this is going to be new and there's going to be a lot of, I guess, old memory of just cruising down the street there. Anything we can do to really get the driver's attention? Oh, you're going too fast. Oh, there's a pedestrian, I mean, anything we can do to, heads up, driver, you know, here's your speed, here's a crosswalk, this is a pedestrian-friendly area, slow down, right? I, that's what I'm trying to drive at. You know, I think we should do that for the benefit of the community there. So I would be inclined to, if my colleagues support me, to ask would that be included in the recommendation?
Chair, why don't we see if there's any public speakers on this? And then we'll have commission discussion to talk about our opinions.
Sure, Vice Chair Kemp.
So in Attachment 3, this is the, I guess, calculation of points. And I'm just seeing zeros, you know, all the way down. So, so this really doesn't qualify for the crosswalk.
So if it was a standalone intersection, like I said, it technically wouldn't qualify. You don't have, you know, dozens and dozens of people a day crossing this location. Really, it's, the trolley stop is why we've got staff support for adding this here.
Okay, so that's, that's the reason. It's not a public outcry.
Well, the public outcry drew our attention to it. And so part of their argument was that it is also a trolley stop and that's why they're crossing the street. We do get a lot of people parking on the south side of Camino Capistrano from the apartments on the north side. And so people are crossing and we'll see if they actually use the crosswalk or not. But that's their choice. But at the same time, the comments that we got from the public were for a crosswalk and stop signs and a lot of other stuff.
Are there any other locations on Camino Capistrano where you have these types of crosswalks?
In Dana Point, they have some in front of the park, I believe. I don't know if they have it as much warning as this one because it's kind of a straightaway. But in front of Pines Park, I do believe they've added a few crosswalks recently.
Could be raised too.
I don't know if it's raised because they do also have some speed cushions or speed humps in the old part of Capo Beach. I think they put in before they were, while they were incorporated, before they were incorporated into Dana Point.
Okay, and these, item number four says install thermoplastic crosswalk, yield lines or pavement legends. So is that, that's not raised though, that's just striping?
That's the striping of the ped ahead and it'll...
Yeah, I'll go right there.
Chair, can I ask another question?
Yeah, sure, then we'll go to public comment if there is any.
Is there any accident history of pedestrian-involved accidents at this location?
So Ryan did look that up. We didn't find any from, what was the year we looked at, was it?
Yes, we checked since 2006 up to the, until the 2022. I couldn't find any pedestrian-related accidents at that location.
Thank you.
Tamara, do we have any blue speaker cards for this item? Okay. Okay, did you want to go ahead and call them up then?
Okay, I'm gonna call your name. And if you line up, if you recall, I'm gonna call all four of you, starting with Tom Streeter, Michael Fuston, Carol Becker, and Paul Hickey.
While they're getting organized, I just want to remind everybody that we do have the three-minute limit and then we'll have the timer here. So, Tom, welcome.
My name is Tom Streeter. I live at 204 Montevista. It was my house that you should, that you pulled in on from Google Maps. I had not considered the red striping along Montevista and La Ventana and Via Brevi. We have, somebody has put in white striping where the sidewalks come out from the interior of the, of the complex onto the roads. And it would be nice if they were official red, but I think they're unofficial white. And we're not parking there anyway. Everybody likes the idea of being able to walk out onto the street to get to their cars. To me, that's a non-issue. The important issue is the crosswalk onto Camino Capistrano. If you look at the maps there, the top side, which is the north side, that has a sidewalk going all the way down to the beach and it has a sidewalk going all the way into town. The south side, which is where we live, doesn't have a sidewalk at all going down to the beach. And the sidewalk going into town stops about the time it hits the Dana Point line. And there are three or four houses where it's all broken up. You cannot safely walk on the south side of Camino Capistrano into town, which we'd like to do. I always want to cross at that street, cross that crosswalk. It's the obvious place to put in a crosswalk. I'd like to cross there and to be able to walk into town or to walk down to the beach. And right now, when I do it, I have to listen to make sure that I don't hear a car coming either way because I can't see them, they can't see me. And sometimes I'm standing there for five minutes until the traffic happens to get down. And then I can get down to the beach and watch the surfers, although they're not that many with Poche Beach being as contaminated as it is. But I strongly recommend that we put in this crosswalk, have the red zones, which are appropriate for the crosswalks, the signage, which is appropriate for the crosswalk. As to the rest of the stuff, the little red things where our sidewalks come out onto the street, maybe yes, maybe no. To me, that's a non-issue. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, my name is Michael Fuston and I live at 2911 Camino Capistrano. So I am facing that Camino Capistrano there. There's many things I'd like to address. I know I have a little time, but I want to address the, Brad, in front of our sidewalks. Right now, cars park in front of our sidewalks continuously. So when you talk about walking out on Camino Capistrano, you're trying to get between cars because they're all parked there. They're bumper-to-bumper at night and in the morning, they're there until nine or 10 o'clock. And you can't get out on the street. Now you talk about, do we really want people walking out on the street between cars? We do because there'd be some safety there. Right now, there's no safety. Not only are you going through landscaping to get out, you're also then going between several cars to try to get on the street. We walk there every day with our dog, back and forth multiple times, as many people do. So that's one concern I think is very important. The crosswalk, I was one of the people that called about having a crosswalk there because of the issues that you see. And not only do you run across the street, you have people coming down there honking at you as you're trying to get across the street. They're not going 30 miles an hour. Now, I'm sure some are from what you put up there. Now, I'm sure some are from what you put up there. They're speeding because there's no stop sign until you get to Dana Point. And then there's not another stop sign until you get down the hill by the DMV. And cars go charging through there. As I walk to Pines Park every day, there are stop signs along the way in Dana Point, and people are rolling through stop signs all day long, as you probably know. So people aren't stopping. And so I urge you to put this crosswalk in. I'm thankful no one's been hit there. I think someone's going to be hurt there eventually if we don't do something about it. And I think this is the safe way to go. We worked on the landscape project that's out front that you see there. It's quite dense now, so people are trying to walk through there. And at Bay Cliff Village North, where I live, the average age is seventy-eight. So a lot of our citizens have canes and they have walkers. So when you talk about trying to get out on Comino Capistrano between cars, having a space that's open from the sidewalk to the street is very important to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Just for the record, I want to indicate that we've been joined by Commissioner Crandall. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Carol Becker. I live directly across Comino Capistrano from the gentleman that just spoke in the Shore Cliff Villas complex. I am out on Comino Capistrano walking at least twice a day because I have a dog. And as with what the first gentleman said, if I want to cross the street, I stand there until I can't hear a car at all because I can't see. Luckily, I am fairly agile. I can walk quickly if I need to. But being slightly over seventy, I'm not sure how long that's going to continue. But I'm hoping that I can live where I live until, you know, until I'm no longer there. And I want to be able to enjoy walking in that area. I think the sidewalk is imperative. The car, as he said, your study shows that they only go thirty-three miles an hour. That's an average. There are cars, especially in the later evening when they want to get home from work, they're going fast, really fast. And you cannot get across that street safely at all. I think the early warning is good because it's going to help to get people to slow down, to just realize that that is not a forty-five mile an hour thoroughfare. You've got to slow down. You're no longer on Pacific Coast Highway. I wish that our speed limit there was like it is down by Pines Park, twenty-five miles per hour, which is just on the other side of Comino Maracosta. But that's probably never going to happen. But maybe, as the one gentleman suggested, having the solar signs that flash when you are going too fast. Because that's going, that's a visual thing that tells, oh, yeah, I know it works for me when I'm going the other way towards Pines Park. Sometimes I'm thinking about something else and I'll see that light flashing that I'm going too fast and it's, oh, God, I did that. I shouldn't have. It's just a way of notifying drivers to clue in to what they're doing. So that's it. Hopefully, you'll approve everything.
Thank you. I believe you are our last speaker.
I am. Hi, my name's Paul Hickey, and I am the president of the Bay Cliff Village North Board. Relatively new. And when you think about Bay Cliff Village North, I am not a young man, but I am on the young end of the spectrum. Bay Cliff Village is made up of three communities, all fifty-five-plus communities. There are eighty-seven homes there. And then if you look on the map behind you, there are the homes that are on La Ventana, private homes. When the plan went out to the public a few weeks ago, everybody got something in their mailbox and you saw activity. People were out talking about how pleased they were to finally get something. There was a woman on La Ventana who came up. I've never seen her before in my life. She said she's been here over forty years. And she said, for forty years, we've been asking for something like this. We went through boxes this summer in our association, just filing things, just organizing things. And I was amazed at the number of copies of typed carbon letters from the seventies and eighties that have been asking for this. No answers, but I have things from people that have died thirty years ago. This is a great opportunity to do something. People talked about trying to cross the street and listening. What I've also heard, and it speaks to what's behind you, it says, "In God, we trust." People have said repeatedly before trying to cross the street to walk their dog, to go to church, to go to the beach, they say a prayer. They listen, they say a prayer, they cross. These are older people. All they want to do is go for a walk on the side of the street where there's a sidewalk, where there's a church, where there's access to a beach, where there's grass where they can walk their dog. If you approve this, I assure you, you will see more people using the trolley. They'll be getting on and off those stops because they're safely able to do so. You'll see people who are able to walk the neighborhood. So thank you for looking at this. Thank you for giving it your time and attention. On behalf of all the people who are not in this room tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. And to all our speakers. This is the time where we will have our discussion, but before we do that, Commissioner Crandall?
Chair, if I could just interrupt real fast, we did have, I believe, a few written comments on this one? Just to note for the record.
Yes, I will note for the record. On the dais, the comments that were emailed to the city were printed and provided to all commissioners. Commissioner Crandall, I want to give you an opportunity if you wanted to ask staff a question or before we get into discussion.
I'll ask the city attorney, is it okay to participate if I didn't hear all public comment? Is that inappropriate?
I would recommend that you probably abstain because you didn't hear the whole presentation.
Very good. Commissioner, comments, Mr., Commissioner Davis, you want to lead us off?
Sure. I got a couple. Now, at the forty-two-foot red, added red curb, what is the thought process of that?
So we've added that for southbound traffic. If you, look at the exhibit, we're trying to get less cars parked there. So if a higher-profile car is parked there, it kind of blocks a little bit extra visibility of the upcoming crosswalk. So assuming they didn't see the signs, assuming they didn't see the flashing sign, we're hoping they can actually physically see the next flashing sign a little bit sooner.
So that's all about the crosswalk and you're trying to protect from higher, taller cars to see the yellow flashing lights better?
Of the, you're actually seeing the actual crosswalk location a little bit earlier.
Coming from on this page, from left to right.
Correct.
So it's left to right because the crosswalk's literally right there. Like, you know, right there. So left to right, that thing right there is going to, do we have a, a parking issue on this street at all? Is this very highly impacted? Are they going to miss these forty-two feet?
You know, I, I can't speak for all the residents in the area. I do know that we do have a lot of residents that do park on Comino Capistrano and even overflow into Monte Vista and Villa Breve. At least from communications with the HOA, it sounds like there's a lot of overflow into these areas. We haven't heard complaints or any of the phone calls. I, I forgot to mention, I did receive also two phone calls in support. But I haven't heard any other phone calls or emails or written correspondences concerned about the loss of parking.
Well, now, the green, you're adding, or that, is that red? Hold on, hold on.
It, it's red currently and we're removing, we're removing eight feet of it.
Yes, I guess speak into it better. Okay. Now, the struggle of crosswalk. Oh, okay, say you did put a crosswalk in, right? And I, I think it's, to our left of this diagram would be north, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then west, where would you put the button to request to cross the street?
You're, you're at the crosswalk. So when you get to the crosswalk location, there is, the, the blow-up exhibit shows, shows it a little bit better. That pole will have a button on it that'll activate the in-ground lights and a flashing light on that pole. And then that's, that's your crosswalk activation button.
Okay, for now, I'm going to think about that. Thank you.
Sure.
Chair.
Commissioner McCann.
Do you mind if I chime in?
Jump in.
Great, thank you. I'm, I think you've done a good job of designing the crosswalk with the maximum possible notification to it with in-ground markings and the advanced warnings and all that stuff. My opinion, and I get a vote, is I think the crosswalk is a bad idea.
Do you want to give us your reasons on that?
No, I'll just leave it. Of course I do. Someone mentioned that they felt very nervous crossing the street. I don't know if it was you or whatever.
I mentioned that.
That's the way I want pedestrians. Those painted lines do not protect you at all. If you are nervous, you're paying attention, you're at maximum awareness of, of your surroundings and what's coming at you. And one of the speakers mentioned, you know, cars don't stop at the stop signs. They're not going to stop, you know. It's well advan, it's well noticed for a crosswalk. But given the fact that the warrant doesn't even come close to penciling as a warrant, it's for perceived trolley traffic in the summer only. There's no accident history in the sixteen years that were looked at. Someone said, oh, someone's going to do something. Well, maybe doing the right thing is to not put in the crosswalk. That's, that's my opinion. And that's how I'll be voting.
Okay, very good. Vice Chair Camp, would you like to join in the discussion?
Sure. First of all, the, the trolley, it stops, it looks like where you're putting red curb, right? I mean, that's, isn't that, if I'm reading this?
The, the light dash is existing. So it's existing red curb at the.
So the red dash is new. And the red solid is existing?
I think you're right. What you're saying is right.
Other way around?
I think you're right. I think that's existing, yeah, and that's new.
Okay, so, so that's proposed, but the trolley can still park, I assume?
Correct.
Okay, you just can't, so if somebody's parked there, the trolley has no place, no place to stop anyway?
I'm, yes, that came to our realization also.
So that's kind of a.
Sorry for not bringing that up.
Yeah, that's kind of a no-brainer, I guess.
Ultimately, a trolley would, would pull forward if they saw somebody there. You're looking at, on average, fifteen people a week, so.
Okay. And then on the other side, where you're, where you're opening it up for parking space, that's also where the trolley stops.
Correct. And that is existing red right now, on the, on the south side, yeah.
Okay, so how's that going to work if you've got cars parked there?
No, that, the existing red stays. The only red that's being removed is the green, is the eight feet of green.
So there's still room for the trolley?
There's still room for the trolley, yes.
Oh, it's on the other, oh, it's on the other side. Okay, got it. All right, so just to comment on the idea of the crosswalk. Commissioner McCann, just to kind of respond to that. I, personally, my experience is that where there is a crosswalk, yeah, you're still kind of looking, but you, you have a little, I guess, more comfort going across than you would if there was no crosswalk. I mean, certainly people, especially when the thing first goes in, it's going to take some getting used to, I think. But these are people that, that commute across that area regularly. So I think it's, you know, I don't think your people are, are going to go, oh, just, you know, willy-nilly cross the crosswalk just because it's there, especially when there's no stop sign or signal. But I do think it's, it's, especially with the early warning, I think it's going to be an improvement, which is what we're looking for. I don't see where the crosswalk really hurts. It may slow people down, I think. Just knowing, once they know there's a crosswalk there. I know for myself, when I'm driving in certain areas, especially in El Camino Real, where I know there's one, I'm automatically kind of more cautious, right? To, to make sure there's nobody stepping out. Because people do, you know, those have been there a long time. People do step out into the crosswalk without kind of checking. I think here, you're still going to be listening and you're going to be alert, but at least it, it gives them a better chance of making it across. And, and nobody's been hurt there. And obviously, they've been commenting and complaining about this for a long time. So is it that dangerous? Maybe not, maybe not. But I, I think it's an improvement. So I'm going to, my position's going to be to support the idea of adding the crosswalk. Now, the four-foot red curb at the end of those walkways, I'm kind of mixed on that. I mean, I think we could do without those. You know, people park, there's always gaps, you know, I mean, people don't park that well. It's been my experience, you know, there's always, it's always a place to get through. And I think that does take away from the parking on those streets, which obviously, if it's pretty full, then people need, you know, they need to be able to use those. So that part of it, I'm not, I'm not that thrilled about. But I do support the, the crosswalk. And I think there's a lot of thought, obviously, that's gone into this, a lot of evaluation, especially with that trolley. And we're hoping that that trolley gets more traction in this area. So I think it's, it's a benefit overall.
Okay. Vice Chair McCann, did you have some comments you want to make?
Yeah, the little, some of mine are similar, the little dots, you know, in front of the walkways. I'm sure this area is not ADA compliant because of its age. That's so. There's so many where it comes. Somebody really needs that access. They now have the power to call on the phone and. I have a favor of the new red stripe.
The little bus to park there without having to stop, you know, park in the traffic. And the crosswalk, I think, for most people that travel, it'll be a learning device. It'll be a memory that they'll know there's one. Just like that one up on El Camino that's by that little fish place that we approved on the corner. You know, it's not Cabrillo, but it's, that, you know, you know, it's there and it's going to light up and flicker and flash. But it's true, it doesn't guarantee that the person in the crosswalk is truly safe. But that's, at least the person who's going to the crosswalk is going to hopefully push the little button. They'll know there's lights, but they still got to look for the car to stop. And so I am in favor. I, I don't know about the flashing linking sign. It'll have, it would have to be at least where the thirty mile an hour signs would be or somewhere where they could have enough, you know, braking time or thinking time to slow down. But I think it makes that those people who do drive it, they'll know it's there.
Okay. Just to move us along, as of the time, I want to get on to the next item. I am in support of this. I do want to urge my colleagues to consider the radar speed warning sign because, exactly for the reasons of Commissioner McCann's concerns. I'm, I'm very empathetic to what he's saying. I agree with him in many regards. So I feel like adding that would give, would give the edge to the pedestrian because the driver's getting additional notifications to be paying attention to their speed. With that, I'm open to any motions.
I have a couple more, I have a couple more questions.
Okay.
So in your blow-up, you know, in the, the zoomed in where the person's across the street, it has a nice sidewalk for that person to stand and push the button. Is there a sidewalk at the end where that, this crosswalk terminates right there? How's that person going to get there?
So you, you are correct. On the south side, there is not sidewalk. We'll be adding about forty feet of sidewalk on the south side.
You will be adding?
We will be adding sidewalk where needed to get to it, yes.
Yes. And then the trolley is currently operating there, correct?
It's, it's operating in summer months. It is not, not today, right now.
So I want to bring to the attention my, my commissioners. If you look at this forty-two feet of red curbing, if you look to the north of that, it's got the dots of red that the, the trolley is already utilizing to park and pick up pedestrians. The forty-two feet is not needed for trolley operation, correct?
It, it actually, I think Commissioner Cosgrove brought up a good point. It is right in front. The proposed red curb is basically right adjacent to the trolley stop as it is right now. So it, the trolley would have, if somebody. So it, the trolley would have, if somebody were parked there, the trolley would have to stop somewhere else, not immediately next to the sign. So it either stops short of it, or it stops a little bit past it.
Okay, I just, I'm concerned about giving up parking spaces, but we'll, we'll hammer on that, but, okay, okay, that's all.
If I could add one quick thing, if we are gonna add the electronic speed feedback signs, we'd like to possibly talk about the location for them, therefore, your recommendation includes that design aspect into its recommendation.
Would you like to propose?
So on Exhibit 4, we, we show a, I wish this was a pointer, on the north side of Camino Capistrano, where it says Camino Capistrano, across the street from about the O in Camino, you see some trees right there.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere in about that location would be the, the one on the north side of the street. And then on the south side of the street, I'm a little worried about clutter of the signs, but it would possibly be in between the, the guy walking sign and the, the intersection sign, that little T. So it's, um...
Why not further back?
Further back, closer to the straightaway? I'm getting, I'm getting...
Right, right as it starts the bend.
That's kinda where that other flashing light already is.
Oh, see, I gotcha.
So I'm trying to separate these a little bit, just so they're not...
Okay.
But if at least we get direction from, if you are going down that path, that at least the recommendation includes your, your, your consideration of the design too, of, in those general vicinity's is how I would probably word it, of what was discussed at the hearing, if you, if you do to make a motion to that.
Can I make a suggestion regarding that?
Yes, please.
I would say, maybe just make a motion that says with, with staff to analyze and recommend to council their preferred location.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Camp, would you wanna lead us through a resolution here?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations of staff on all the items, including the crosswalk, but not including the four-foot red curb spots, if you wanna call them that, squares. I, I don't think that those, I think those are gonna be more of a detriment to the potential parking on those streets, plus it's not really anything bona fide in terms of walkway. There's typically, if, if you're gonna, you're gonna put the red curb there, you know, it's, it's gonna affect parking of potentially two or three cars right there, especially with as many as there are. So I think we should remove that. I don't wanna be too long-winded here. I do also think we should include the flashing speed sign.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, so that's pretty much everything, aside from, and what was the other thing? Commissioner McCann?
It's regarding the location of those flashes to be studied and recommended by staff to counsel.
Right. So is that clear? That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second that. Let me repeat back the motion. So Vice Chair Camp has moved Staff Recommendations 1, 2, and 3 with some modifications. Modification would be to Recommendation Number 2, Attachment 1, where we have the five-foot red striping along Camino Capistrano and Monte Vista. Is that, is that the spirit of what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. To remove those, otherwise all other red line striping remain. And then Number 3 would be the addition of a radar flashing speed warning signs in both directions to be deter, and location to be determined by staff. Does that characterize it? And I seconded that. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll be voting no, only because I think the red dot should be in there. I don't think it messes up.
Would you like to make another, would you like to make a substitute motion?
I'd make a substitute motion to make the little four-foot red dots stay, otherwise the same as, that would be my second motion.
Do we have, does somebody want a second? Chair Protem McCacken's substitute motion? Any, does someone wanna subs, uh, second that? All right, that, that will have, that will die due to lack of a second. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm just gonna go down the row here. Yes?
Real quick, there is one or two red dots on Via Brive. I don't know if you meant to eliminate that. You said Camino Capistrano and Monte Vista. There are, I believe, one on Via Brive. So when you said eliminate those, you, you only mentioned two streets.
What, you're the maker of the motion?
Yeah, I, I was intending for all of them to be eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
All right. There's no other discussion? Commissioner McCann?
No.
Vice Chair Camp?
Yes.
Chair Protem McCacken?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And I believe you're an abstain, Commissioner Crandall, and I am a yes as well, so motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for going through this in such great detail. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Thank you, Mr. Ponzen.
Thank you.
All right, great job on that, everybody. Thank you so much for bearing with us while we work through that item. Next item is 9C. It is an interpretation of our pedestrian-oriented policy as it pertains to Smart Fit Method located on Vista del Mar. And we do have Carla Morales here to provide the staff report. Carla, please, welcome. Welcome to Planning Commission.
Thank you, Chair Cosgrove. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Carla Morales, Community Development Technician with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting tonight's item. So the zoning code allows applicants to request an interpretation if they believe that there are any ambiguities in the code. The city planner determined that this is a major interpretation due to its potential for public impact or concern, and as such, staff is requesting Planning Commission action tonight on this interpretation request. I wanna clarify that this is not a public hearing. Planning Commission interpretations are considered an administrative action, and the code does not require the city to provide notice of this meeting to surrounding owners.
Could you provide just a little bit, I mean, did you have a presentation to go through still?
I do, it's technical difficulties.
I gotcha. Okay, that's why we're pausing. Okay, very good.
There you go. Sorry about that. So the Smart Fit Method is a unique health-oriented business that incorporates personal training, fitness, medical and nutritional consultations, and retail activity into one business. The Smart Fit Method is located at 223 Avenida Del Mar, Unit C, which is shown on the slide. The property is zoned mixed-use 3.0, and it's within the coastal zone, central business and architectural overlay districts. And the central business overlay is sometimes referred to as the pedestrian overlay in the general plan, so those terms may be used interchangeably. The applicant inquired about a business license for the Smart Fit Method after moving into the suite, at which time staff identified a potential issue that the business may not meet the pedestrian orientation requirement for businesses in the central business overlay. The applicant's specific request includes the following components. So number one, determine that the business is a group instruction use, which is a conditionally permitted use in the mixed-use 3.0 zone. And number two, determine that group instruction is a pedestrian-oriented use. The applicant provided a justification letter, which is included as Attachment 2 in your staff report, to support the request. The Smart Fit Method has onsite coaches that provide instruction and monitor client progress and client use of the onsite exercise equipment with no appointments required. And other accessory uses also occur onsite, such as retail sales and diagnostic screenings. The proposed business will have dedicated retail space at the front of the tenant's space, which is intended to generate pedestrian activity, and no amplified noise or entertainment is requested as part of this use. A floor plan of the business is shown on the slide, but it's also included as Attachment 3 of the staff report for your reference. The applicant proposes a maximum of four clients at one time, which does not require a use permit. And planning staff classifies group instruction of under five clients to be similar to a general office in terms of the use classification impacts on parking due to the smaller group size. However, if the applicant were to propose five or more clients in the future, approval of a minor conditional use permit would still be required at that time. So staff prepared this table to describe the outcomes of the decision made tonight. If the request is approved, then the business would need a business license and would be able to operate in the space. Other group instruction uses, such as yoga studios, would also be permitted in pedestrian-oriented spaces, and in cases of five or more clients, again, an MCP would still be required for these uses. If the request to be classified as group instruction is denied, then the commission should identify the business as a defined use in the mixed-use 3.0 zone, and if there's any ambiguity, also determine whether or not it is a pedestrian-oriented use. And lastly, if the request for group instruction uses to be considered pedestrian-oriented is denied, then the applicant has the option to apply for a minor conditional use permit. The zoning code allows non-pedestrian-oriented uses to operate in a pedestrian-oriented space with the approval of a minor conditional use permit, and this permit is heard by the zoning administrator. Or the business may select to operate outside of the central business overlay district, in a zone where group instruction is either permitted or conditionally permitted. And in addition to the specific interpretation on the Smart Fit Method, staff believes that other business types can benefit from clarification on whether or not they can be classified as pedestrian-oriented. So staff is also seeking commission direction on other uses and welcomes additional input beyond the list on the slide. This list is similarly referenced in the resolution and can be amended as the commission sees appropriate, based on your discussion. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission adopt the attached resolution and approve Interpretation 23-352, or amend the resolution based on direction of which uses the commission determines are pedestrian-oriented. That concludes staff presentation, and the business owner is also here as well, if you have any questions for either staff or the applicant.
Thank you, Carla. Before we hear from the business owner, do we have some questions for staff?
One.
Okay?
Can you refresh my memory? How far does the central business overlay go beyond Del Mar? Is it just Del Mar?
It is not just Del Mar. There are some sections of El Camino Real that include that. I'm not sure...
But there's nothing parallel to Del Mar, like the next, the two streets over from Del Mar? 'Cause there're dentists and doctor's offices on those.
Right. I'm not quite sure off the top of my head Jonathan...
So it must not be.
Might, no?
Central Business District Overlay, is it just Del Mar?
Oh, no. So the central...
Del Mar, El Camino, I'm talking about the streets that would be parallel to Del Mar. So like Cabrillo?
Yes. So the Central Business District mirrors much of our T-zone, if you're familiar with that, so it does run along portions of El Camino Real. I believe the, the stretch is Rosa to Palizada. I don't have the graphic in front of me, but I believe that it's Rosa to Palizada.
Commissioner Crandall?
Any chance we can get the zoning map pulled up?
Yeah, we can do that. Give me one moment.
That would help on that. And is there any way to address this just on Del Mar versus all pedestrian areas?
Currently, as, as the resolution is written, and it does just address the central business overlay district, so I think we might have to wait until the zoning map is pulled up to see how far that extends.
Okay.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Maybe, you know, we have a request from Smart Fit Method, but staff is also wanting to have us provide a bigger interpretation for other uses. Maybe the way we could satisfy your request is to just rule on the Smart Fit Method only application, and then say, no, we're not gonna make decision on these other uses. That would, that would limit it to this one site, this one use.
But I think we all already know that that could set a precedence, and she actually put that in her report.
Correct. So I'll go back to the other slide that mentions, it might be frozen because they're pulling up the zoning map. But yes, so if, if you do approve the interpretation, that would extend the precedent to other group instruction uses in the central business overlay.
Other what uses in the...
Other group instruction uses. So the applicant's request is to be classified as a group instruction use and to be determined pedestrian-oriented. So if you approve that second portion, then that would extend to other group instruction uses.
Right, but we wouldn't be making a decision on chiropractors and barbers and catering halls and all that stuff.
Right, that could be separate, yes.
And right now, am I correct, that when in doubt, it becomes a minor conditional use permit?
That's correct, that's the...
At this point, so there is a way currently in the books to approve something like this?
So if you determine tonight that group instruction is not pedestrian-oriented, then that is an option available to the applicant. That portion of the zoning code is provided as Page 3 of the staff report. That excerpt of the code is, is in there.
Because something, the trend has always been that Del Mar is becoming tur, pedestrian/tourist-oriented. So the uses want to lean a little bit more towards that concept, but not in the other areas necessarily. So that's something to consider.
Right. I think what you're trying to clarify, Commissioner Crandall, is there's a path forward either way for the applicant.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Other, before we bring up the applicant, do we have, did you, Commissioner Davis?
Question. Tell me about the, the four people at once, four pedestrians?
For, oh, yes, so...
Elaborate on that? Did you guys catch that?
Yeah, so group instruction as defined is our services provided to five or more people at one time, and that triggers a minor conditional use permit in zones where group instruction is conditionally permitted. But for group instruction uses that provide service to four clients or less, staff considers that similar to a general office due to the smaller impact in comparison to a larger number of clients.
What we're talking about here is five or more?
It's four or less. Currently, the applicant is proposing four or less.
Oh, wow.
However, if in the future they would like to provide services to five or more, a minor conditional use permit would be required at that time, for the five or more.
Okay. Oh, Vice Chair Camp?
Yeah, just to clarify, staff's recommendation, I'm reading it here, it says, recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 23015, approving Interpretation 23-352, Smart Fit Method, and pedestrian-oriented uses. So are you recommending that we interpret this to be a pedestrian-oriented use?
Yes, that's staff recommendation. So the resolution is split up into two different portions of the request, so Section 2 includes the applicant's request, or, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Section 2 includes the staff request, and then Section 3 includes the findings.
So why does it say "and"?
Staff wants us to...
Yes. So sorry about that, I did misspeak. So the Smart Fit Method request is two items, so that's to determine that their business model is a group instruction use. Their second portion of their request is to determine that group instruction is a pedestrian-oriented use. The zoning code isn't clear on whether or not group instruction is a pedestrian-oriented use or not. Separate from that, staff is seeking additional commission direction on other pedestrian-oriented uses, which is the list that was on the slide and is in the staff report. However, we can amend the resolution based on the direction from the commission.
Okay, so do we have the opportunity, based on what you recommend, to pick one or the other? Are you looking for us to make an interpretation on all these other uses as well?
Uh, yeah, staff is seeking direction for the benefit of other businesses that are looking to go into the central business overlay district. There's not enough clarity in the code, so we're seeking commission direction for it, for clarification on those other types of uses.
Okay, but we don't have any specific applicants...
Correct.
For those, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just going down the line. Did you wanna come back?
I was gonna say, if Quest comes in and says, we wanna have a draw station, and there's gonna be five draw, you know, five phlebotomists, would that qualify as a heavy pedestrian use?
So currently, our pedestrian-oriented uses section on Page 3 of the staff report is very vague and limited. There's not a clear definition of, of whether or not to determine a business pedestrian-oriented, which is why staff is seeking additional clarification on these uses.
That's the only issue that I kind of have. If you have a physician who wants to come in and have a professional office that says he's gonna see five patients at one time, this would allow that, this change of, because that would be pedestrian-friendly or pedestrian use. But yet, we already say in our report here that chiropractors, physical therapy offices, you know, they're... you know, they're not allowed. They're non-pedestrian-oriented. This will allow anybody who says, I'm going to see five clients at one time, or a large medical group that could see five patients at one time, that would be considered a pedestrian-friendly. I think it's not a good.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm going to move to.
There's a lot of loopholes.
Yeah, I want to get to the questions real quick for staff. So Commissioner McCann, questions for Ms. Morales?
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
With the minor use permit that would be required, does that come back before planning?
So there were mentions of two different minor use permits. Are you just talking about the minor use permit for the pedestrian-oriented business?
Correct.
No, that would go to the zoning administrator.
Thank you.
Sure. Vice Chair Camp.
So the only reason this applicant is making this request is to avoid the minor conditional use permit approval process?
There's just no direct clarification in the zoning code for us to be able to make a determination on whether or not they're pedestrian-oriented. If it were clear that they were not pedestrian-oriented, then the only avenue would be the minor use permit. However, there's just not enough direction in the code for staff to determine that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question on your staff report, page three, where it has the table there, permitted and conditionally permitted uses definitions. 1B, the non-pedestrian-oriented uses, are you asking us to look at those tonight specifically? The ones in B?
No, the list that we provided are items that are not referenced either in 1A or 1B.
Okay, where are those items?
Those items are listed.
Is it on page five?
Yes, on page five in the bullet points.
Gotcha. So the additional examples would be the group instructions such as yoga.
Correct.
Studios.
Correct.
And then possibly, would you are asking clarification on the flip side, non-pedestrian uses, to confirm that, say, the physical therapy and chiropractic catering kitchens and such would remain non-pedestrian-oriented?
Correct.
Okay. I think I understand.
Don't we have a gym, fitness use already, in that overlay?
It moved.
Oh, it moved?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah. It's on El Camino, and it moved, just out of the T-zone. Tamara, do we have any blue speaker cards for this item? All right. Let's go into discussion. Who wants to lead us off?
I'm just wondering, you know, I mentioned the applicant is here.
Mm-hmm.
If we want to invite them, if they have anything they want to say.
They are welcome to submit the card if they want to speak. Do somebody want to, do you want to hear from them? We can invite them up.
No, I just want to give them an opportunity. He might have not realized.
Forgotten?
A card or something.
Okay.
I think this is, I'd like to jump in real quick before he gets his card down here. This is one of the first chances we've had in a long time to be planning commissioners and kind of set the tone of where San Clemente is going. And I think Del Mar is, you know, our biggest focal point, and I think it needs to be treated differently than the El Camino Real, pedestrian zones and other pedestrian zones. We've got spa or gyms and all like that. And I'm concerned, it's a big question, and a complicated one to come up with, you know, what is pedestrian, or should it be considered pedestrian-tourist or whatnot on Del Mar? And I'm thinking a third option from staff's recommendations would be to say, okay, let's study this a little deeper and really get our teeth into it and do what's right for the Del Mar commercial zone, being that there is currently a path for them to get approval without setting any precedences.
I agree with that.
So that's just.
I would like to bifurcate.
What I hear you saying is, in looking at the map, the purple is the area in question, and what I hear you saying, Commissioner Crandall, is, you know, we may want to look at an actual special districting for Del Mar, and not have some broad brush in the whole purple area. So Jonathan, if we wanted to do that, what's your recommendation in terms of process? Can we maybe agendize that for a future date?
Yeah, I heard the word bifurcate earlier. I think it might make sense to continue the further discussion of the broader context of pedestrian and non-pedestrian uses. And we can follow your direction through whatever that motion is to add any additional considerations that you'd like to see expanded upon in that report when that returns.
Excellent, okay.
And we can discuss.
So it's possible. And so now do we have a speaker?
But to my earlier question, everything in purple then needs to be pedestrian-oriented.
So yes, that's the pedestrian-oriented area mimics our T-zone, that purple area.
How do we get dentists in there?
So there's some exceptions within our code. You'll see that second floor allow for those types of uses, dentists, other uses, and then also if we.
We have first-floor dentists in that area.
Yeah, so in those cases, the gym would have been the same case, and a legal non-conforming use would have been one that occupied one of those spaces that was first floor prior to the implementation of this pedestrian overlay.
Let's go, I want to move us along, so could we, Tamara, do you mind reading up the speakers?
The speaker that we have is the applicant, Rob Darnbro.
Please come on up and join us, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Actually, ten for the applicant.
Well, it's not a public hearing, so we're just going to stick with the three.
Yeah, so mainly, I would like to answer your questions on two fronts, is, I'm the franchisor, so we have five locations of Smart Fit Method throughout Southern California. And what we do is we focus on health span and longevity using and applying technology that has generally been reserved for professional athletes and celebrities, and making it accessible to our aging population and giving them the opportunity to be able to access this type of equipment that normally you wouldn't see in a general area. The reason that we don't fall into the traditional large-group fitness is we're not sort of a group fitness in the sense that we're open at 1:00, 4:00, and 7:00, where 15 to 20 people converge on a facility with one trainer working with 15 or 16 people at once. Our algorithm only allows for four people to be working out at any given time in the facility, and the algorithm will continue on that level. So what's happening is they're working through different pieces of equipment, and there's one trainer working with them in a small group setting. The second trainer that is on the floor is there for, we get a lot of walk-ins, we get a ton of pedestrian traffic, people coming in, because as you may know, AI and longevity are two of the most sought-after words on the internet today. We apply both of them within our facilities. So our equipment is AI-adapted technology that allows you to go into a facility and actually have the equipment adapt to you as opposed to you adapting to it. So it becomes very intriguing to individuals. As a matter of fact, while we were actually training at San Clemente, we had a five-to-one pedestrian over our other locations, of people coming in and asking what it was all about. They can also purchase this equipment for their homes as well, or use it within the minor group setting, right? We have additional offerings. Once a person has gotten into exercise and understanding how to train correctly and using the body of science that we have, they then start to look for more advice around nutrition, sleep, hormonal optimization, and stress management. And therefore, what we have is we have a second trainer that is always working on the floor in introducing what we have as retail product and also answering questions from the public. In Cardiff, our first location has not only drawn in tremendous traffic to that area that would have otherwise not been there, because our members come in three to five times a week, but they're only there for 20 minutes. So what they tend to do is then go out and participate in other businesses in the area. The next-door coffee shop at Cardiff has increased their revenue by 38% per year since we've moved in. So we're driving business into the community, and we're driving it in in the population that controls 70% of all disposable income, which is our 50-plus marketplace. So that drives not only pedestrian traffic to us, but also to all of the other patrons in the area.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tamara, did we have any other speakers, public comments?
We do have one other, John Di Maria.
And thank you, Carla. I appreciate all the hard work. So I came across Smart Fit about a year ago when I started working out there, and I just love the concept, very community-oriented. It brings in, I lived 20 minutes away and started working out, so it brings in patrons from other areas like Talega and areas like that to come down into this area to work out, to look at the machines, to purchase the product. So it's drawing other area patrons from other areas to actually come down into the city to have lunch. It's very community-oriented, and there's no loud music, there's no wait, there's no, it's just, it's not your typical facility. It's very high-end, it's very community, very friendly, and I just think it's a great concept. So I'm actually the owner of that facility, if we are allowed to have our place there.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you. And you're aware, either way, you have a path forward tonight.
I understand. Timeline for us is not.
Okay.
Have to wait six months.
All right.
It would be probably detrimental.
Thank you.
Yes. Daniel Rockhold.
Daniel, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Daniel Rockhold. As she said, I'm a land use planner, and I was hired by Smart Fit Method to help them with this process. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. We agree with staff's recommendation in terms of aligning this use to a group instruction as indicated they're doing instruction in small batches. Also, we also strongly agree with staff's recommendation that this be considered a pedestrian-oriented use. As both the previous speakers indicated, everything they do also generates pedestrian traffic. You know, they have a retail sales section, they're, once, as soon as, as soon as someone gets off their workout, workout, workout material, workout equipment, they go off and do business in the downtown. So I strongly agree with those recommendations. And from a land use perspective, you know, having worked in multiple jurisdictions, this is definitely the type of use that would definitely be aligned towards group instruction, which I think is the crux of the matter. In terms of bifurcating, as at least one of the commissioners mentioned, bifurcating some of these things to sort of clean this up in terms of not making a ruling on these other things, I think that would be, that would help along in this process to get resolution for my client. Thanks.
Thank you. Who wants to lead off in our discussion of this matter? Any volunteers?
I'll start.
Okay. Chair Protem Akakin.
I think, you know, just trying to make it fit because it says it's a group-oriented business, it just has a lot of other little tentacles, like doctors, health screenings, imaging, blood work, other diagnostic tests. But yet, a dentist's office or a medical office is a non-conforming old-time use. I just believe we're going to be, it's not defined enough, because here, you could have a physician come in, draw blood, or you could have, you know, blood drawing, which is really a medical, you're now getting into the medical professional side of commerce. Why do we want to do that?
Was that a question directed towards me?
Kind of.
Yeah, so.
Like if a dental or a medical office is a non-conforming use.
Yeah, so I think.
Why are you kind of in a subtle or different way using group?
Yeah, this is a unique.
High-traffic, that you can allow it.
It's a unique business type here where B of the code section clearly identifies that medical-oriented uses would not be permitted. So to your earlier question, the phlebotomist, if we had a new business license that came in for a phlebotomist, that's pretty clear to us that they would not qualify under this section. They wouldn't be grandfathered in by this discussion. Like this is a specific interpretation on this business because of the unique circumstances of, they do training, they, we recognize that they kind of fall a little bit into a couple of different categories here. So they're not easy to classify.
Draw blood, you have to have phlebotomist.
Which is, but that's not the primary focus of the business from.
It's a mix.
It's a mix, and that's why we're looking for your determination.
I think we need to better define this.
Yeah, and I don't think.
Mr. Crandall.
And I don't think we can do that here tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, it is complicated.
Yes.
I mean, we went through weeks trying to determine what is an automobile-oriented business.
I recall that.
Selling automobile clothing, you know, getting the wording right was complicated to get it right, so my proposal would be that we move this to a future study session and make sure that the path forward for the applicant is still open on the minor conditional use permit.
Yeah, I like this.
Okay.
Just to kind of piggyback on that.
Sure.
This is why we, this is why we have a minor conditional use permit, is for these uses that are, could go either way, I mean, you know. And it is a minor CUP. I understand you still have to go through the application process. It goes to Z.A., right?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, we can always chime in, but I think that these uses that aren't perfectly fitting into this category should go through the minor CUP process. And if we start making these kind of determinations on a sort of individual basis, we are setting a precedent, there's no question. So, you know, I think it has a good chance of getting the CUP, the minor CUP approval, but that should be, that should remain the process. That's.
Here, we are running a little bit late for the study session.
Yes.
So I think your options at this point are to table this, or if we're only going to need a few more minutes of discussion to go ahead and call the study session to order, and just say the study session will trail after we finish the couple of minutes.
If we have, let me see if we have a motion, and then go to, do we, someone want to propose a motion?
I was going to move that we continue this item to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which I think is December 6th.
Do we have a second?
Well, let me just say first, if we do that, then they're going to lose time on trying to get their CUP, you know.
They could apply for a CUP with, tomorrow, without waiting. They don't need to wait for our determination. We might never come up with a determination that's favorable to them, and they could still turn around. We could deny it tonight, and they could apply for a CUP tomorrow.
That's good.
So, you know, which is kind of hint, hint the path I would recommend they go down.
I think, I think they've heard enough of the discussion to make that decision. So I'm going to second your motion, Commissioner McCann. Do we have any further discussion on the motion, which is to table this item to our next agenda item, next meeting? Any discussion?
Just continue it, don't table it.
It's a continuation.
Yeah, because table, you're going to have to bring it up.
That's what you, that's, I think you said table, but you meant continue.
I said continue.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I already did, so we're good.
Okay. You've got it.
All those in favor of continuing this item to our next regular scheduled meeting in December?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimously carries. Thank you, everybody. Do we need to adjourn this meeting? All right. I will move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission to be held on Wednesday, December 6, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall.
I'll second.
What about the joint study?
Seconded by Vice Chair Camp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
Thank you.